Hello, welcome to Bible study this Trinity Sunday. Recording this Bible study in advance, happy as I'm away this weekend. You're able to watch this Bible study on our Facebook page and our YouTube channel. Our question of the day is going to be shared in a little bit. But I'm going to start with the prayer that CFW Walther wrote on the topic of unity. It's from this book, Life of the Church, A Practical Edition of Pastor Walther's Prayers and Addresses. CFW Walther, a little biography about him, he lived eighteen eleven to eighteen eighty seven. He's known as the American Luther, one of the most dynamic Christian leaders of the modern era. In eighteen forty seven, Walther helped to found the Missouri Synod, the church body included nineteen pastors, thirty congregations, and four thousand ninety-nine baptized members. At the time of his death, forty years later, May seventh eighteen eighty-seven, the church body had grown to nine hundred thirty-one pastors, six hundred seventy-eight member congregations, seven hundred and forty-six affiliated congregations, five hundred and forty-four preaching stations, and four hundred fifty-nine thousand baptized members. Walther also helped found the Log Cabin College, it became known as one of the largest seminaries in North America, Concordia Seminary St. Louis, and he led the publication Der Luteraner. It was a journal, started in eighteen forty-four and became, he also became the first president of the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod. So, this is a book of the prayers he wrote through his time as a president of the Missouri Synod, a president of Concordia Seminary in St. Louis, and a pastor at Trinity Lutheran Church in the Soulard neighborhood of St. Louis. Lord God, our dear heavenly Father, in your word, you admonish your believing children. Have unity of mind, from First Peter three. I appeal to you that there be no divisions among you, but that you be united in the same mind and the same judgment. That's from First Corinthians verse, chapter one. This discordant world is to see that your children are in lovely agreement with one another, not only in their creed, but also in their daily walk. Nor do you want them to approach you in joint prayer, praise, and worship if they are at variance with one another. Grant then that we entreat you that like your elect children on the first Pentecost, we may be of one heart and one mind. Let all that we do in such oneness of heart be pleasing to you for Christ's sake. Bestow your blessing upon us in this church so that we may contribute to your glory and the furtherance of your kingdom of grace here on earth. To that end, bless also our deliberations at this time for the sake of your holy name. Amen. So a prayer on unity, knowing that we live in a discordant world where people are at variance with each other, but we pray that the wisdom and unity of God would lead us in study so that we would give glory to him in our pursuit of the knowledge of him in the word of God. This is a Bible study on prayer, the study sheet was one that was placed on our website last week, although we didn't really get into the topic of this sheet too much last week. We're looking at the attitude that we should have when we pray so that we can be certain, confident, encouraged in our prayer life. We're going to start with a question of the day, and our question of the day today is, is just simply this. You're thirsty, what's your go-to drink? Maybe water, coffee, tea? Mocha, fruit drink? Kombucha? What is your, your go-to drink when you're thirsty? Not a hard question, don't think too hard about it, just when you're thirsty. Include the answer to your que, to this question of the day in the comments in Facebook or on YouTube, and let everyone else know what your go-to drink is when you are thirsty. Alright, we're going to start with prayer today, and I, I shared with you that prayer from Walther, but I also want to share with you a prayer that is in the book of First Samuel. And here it's a prayer of Hannah. And she is married to a man named Alcana, and Hannah is barren, and she wants a child, and so she prays. She prays to the Lord, and her prayer is taken as that of a drunken woman. And we're gonna see how she reacts to that accusation. And so, as she continued praying before the Lord, Eli observed her mouth. Hannah was speaking in her heart, and only her lips moved, and her voice was not heard. Therefore Eli took her to be a drunken woman, and Eli said to her, how long will you go on being drunk? Put your wine away from you. But Hannah answered, no, my Lord. I am a woman troubled in spirit. I have drunk neither wine nor strong drink, but I have been pouring out my soul before the Lord. Do not regard your woman, your servant, as a worthless woman, for all the long I have been speaking out of my great anxiety and vexation. Then Eli answered, go in peace, the God of Israel grant your petition that you have made to him. And she said, let your servant find favor in your eyes. Then the woman went her way and ate, and her face was no longer sad. They rose early in the morning and worshipped before the Lord, then they went back to their house at Ramah. Now Canaan knew, Hannah his wife and the Lord remembered her. And in due time Hannah conceived and bore a son, and she called his name Samuel, for she said, I've asked for him from the Lord. So the reason we start our Bible study on the, the correct attitudes of prayer is because our attitude is not always so easily seen by others. So there is Alcana, Hannah's husband, and he has brought his family to the temple in Shiloh for prayers. And so he knows that Hannah is there for prayer, and he doesn't pay too much mind of it. In fact, when they return home, he, he makes love to her, and she's gonna conceive. Let's look at the other guy, so Eli. Eli sees this woman, and her mouth is moving, but no sound is coming out, and he thinks that she's drunk and just kind of delirious. So, to outside observers, her attitude in prayer looks delirious. But what is the measure for her prayer? The, the faithfulness is not how it looks to other people. Don't worry about how your prayer looks to other people. In fact, we'll find that when we do worry about what our prayer looks like to other people, that is, that is no longer prayer, it's a show. It's a, something other than speaking to God in prayer. So then she explains to Eli what she's doing. And Eli, though he doesn't say, I'm sorry, I accused you of being drunk, he does say, shalom, go in peace. And he then says, may the God of Israel grant your petition that you have made to him. So Eli is understanding that Hannah has prayed to God. She has faith, and so her prayer is heard. Then she goes back with Samuel, as Samuel gets older, and she prays again. And Hannah's song here now is recorded, so in chapter one, the prayer that she has, when she's seeking a child, that's not recorded, we don't know what her words were. Eli doesn't even know what her words were, he says, just may the Lord, the God of Israel grant you your petition. But now in chapter two, we find out the words for her prayer. And, and this is a prayer of thankfulness, she says, my heart exalts in the Lord, my strength is exalted in the Lord, my mouth derides my enemies, because I rejoice in your salvation. There is none holy like the Lord, there is none beside you, there is no rock like our God. Talk no more so very proudly, not, not the arrogance come from your mouth. For the Lord is a God of knowledge, and by him, his action, our actions are weight. And so we see that her prayer now is one of celebration and confidence and courage in what the Lord is able to do. And she's also a little angry at anyone that would have been speaking against her, and said, your words mean nothing compared to the glory of God that's been revealed. And we'll find there's a lot of echo in Mary's prayer, the Magnificat, in Luke chapter one compared to this. For instance, the Lord kills and brings to life, he brings down to shol and raises up. The Lord makes poor and makes rich, he brings low and he exalts, he raises up the poor from the dust, he lifts the needy from the ash heap to make them sit with princes and inherit a seat of honor. For the pillars of the earth are the Lord's, and on them he has set the world. That's very similar to Mary's words in the Magnificat. So that gives you a sense of attitude of prayer as one that is not easily seen by other people. It's one that's of faith in the heart. We're gonna look at another spot of prayer, and this is going to be in Second Kings, and we're gonna see what Hezekiah does in his prayer. So, the context here is that, Second Kings, chapter nineteen, Sinacryb and the Assyrians have destroyed, defeated the ten northern tribes of Israel, and now are advancing with the great strength of an army that has destroyed everyone in its wake, and it's coming towards Jerusalem. And in Sinacryb's pride, he gives a letter of threat to Hezekiah. And so now we're picking up in Second Kings, chapter nineteen, verse fourteen, and we're gonna see how, how does Hezekiah react to his prayer? It says, Hezekiah received the letter from the hand of the messengers, and he read it. Hezekiah went up to the house of the Lord, spread it before the Lord, and Hezekiah prayed before the Lord and said, oh Lord, the God of Israel, and thrown above the cherub, you are the God, you alone, for all the kingdoms of the earth, you have made heaven and earth. So, he starts his prayer by speaking with confidence that the God he is praying to is more powerful than the Sinacryb's army and his might and glory. He says, incline your ear, oh Lord, hear, open your eyes, oh Lord, and see, hear the words of Sinacryb, which he has sent to mock the living God. Truly, oh Lord, the king of Assyria have laid waste the nations and their lands, and have cast their gods into the fire. They were not gods, but the work commenced hands wood and stone, therefore they were destroyed. So now, oh Lord, our God, save us, please from his hand, that all the kingdoms of the earth may know that you, oh Lord, are God alone. So what is Hezekiah's attitude in this prayer? How can we be certain his prayer is going to be heard? He starts with faith. Faith that the God that he is praying to is the one that's above all things, mighty and glory. And so that he knows any threat that's coming against him is nothing compared to the surpassing greatness of God. And he says, I know that the king of Assyria has laid waste to many nations and destroyed the gods of those nations, but they were no gods at all, they were just made of wood and stone, so you've got Hezekiah affirming the first commandment, you shall have no other gods. So then what happens in Second Kings, chapter nineteen, verse twenty, is Isaiah, the son of Emma, sent to Hezekiah saying, thus says the Lord, the God of Israel, your prayer to me about Sinacryb, king of Assyria, I have heard it. This is the word the Lord has spoken, and there's delivery, there's strength and might. Here's what happens then, verse thirty-five, that night the angel of the Lord went out and struck down one hundred eighty-five thousand in the camp of the Assyrians. When the people arose early in the morning, behold, these were all dead bodies. Sinacryb, king of Assyria departed, went home and lived at Nineveh, and as he was worshiping in the house of Nisroch, his god, Adrimalek and Sherezar, his son, struck him down with the sword, escaped into the land of Arat, and Ezra had, and his son reigned in his place. So the end of Sinacryb come in this first commandment issue. What's the first commandment? Remember, you shall have no other gods. You shall have only one God, and that's the God that you talk to, that's the God that you trust in, and that's the God that will deliver you. So when we think about our attitude of prayer, our attitude that gives us confidence that our prayer is going to be heard hinges on the first commandment, knowing that there's only one God. So we pray in the name of Jesus. So last week we looked at John fifteen, in whose name we are to pray. John, chapter fourteen, verses five through fourteen, Jesus says, I am the way, the truth, the life. No one comes to the Father except through me. And what happens to people who pray, who don't know the way of Jesus? They're praying to a God of wood and stone fashioned out of human hands, or in the vanity and the imagination of human minds. It goes nowhere. There's only one God, and that God's been revealed to us through Jesus Christ. Then we looked at James, chapter five. What do we need when we pray? We need faith. In what circumstances can we trust in God? And he lists all these different moments when we should pray, when we're sick, when we're worried, and when others around us are sick and worried. Now we're gonna look at First Kings, chapter eighteen. So just a moment ago, we were at First Kings, chapter nineteen, and we were looking at Hezekiah, and the Assyrians, and Sinacryb. We're gonna go a chapter before that now, and we're gonna read about Elijah, and this is the king that was before Hezekiah, King Ahab, and we're gonna see, well, King, he's not a great king. So let's turn your Bibles now to First Kings, chapter eighteen. So Second Kings nineteen is where we were, now we're in First Kings nineteen. So Ahab is the king, Jezebel is his wife, and things are not going well. And there's a drought in the land, and the, the Lord has brought this drought so that the people would know that they must talk to him. Why is a drought involved in this dispute between Baal and the one true Lord God? Is because Baal and Asherah were Canaanite fertility gods, that not just fertility, like so you'd have more children, but for the fertility of the land. And so, the Canaanites would pray and make sacrifices and have sex with prostitutes to inspire Baal and Asherah to send rain upon the land. So the Lord provides a drought. And in that drought, they keep trying to talk to Baal, and they are going to Elijah's hope, and God's hope is repent of the, the first commandment violations of talking to Baal. They don't, and in fact, King Ahab is encouraging them even more. And so, First Kings, chapter eighteen, verse sixteen starts, so Obadiah went to meet Ahab and told him, and Ahab went to meet Elijah. And when Ahab saw Elijah, Ahab said to him, is it you, the troubleer of Israel? And he answered, I have not troubled Israel, but you have. Your father's house, because you have abandoned the commandments of the Lord, and you followed the Baals. B-A-A-L-S, so this is a false god. Now therefore send and gather all of Israel to me at Mount Carmel, the four hundred and fifty prophets of Baal, and the four hundred prophets of Asherah, who eat at Jezebel's table. So there's gonna be eight hundred and fifty prophets of these false gods, and they're all gonna be gathering. So Ahab does this, he gets them all together at Mount Carmel, and Elijah comes near all the people, and he asks the people, how long are you gonna go on limping between two opinions? If the Lord is God, follow him. And, but if Baal, then follow him. Elijah wants the people to make a decision, to look, to God or to Baal. How do the people respond? Look at First Kings, chapter eighteen, the end of verse twenty-one. The people did not answer him a word. Then Elijah said to the people, I even I only am left of the prophet of the Lord, but Baal's prophets are four hundred and fifty men. So then they're, they're gonna set up this great occasion. And they're gonna have this altar, they're gonna have this fire on it, and he's gonna have them call upon their gods to send fire upon the altar and consume the sacrifice. Let's look at what the prophets of Baal do. So verse twenty-four, you call upon the name of your god, and I'll call upon the name of the Lord. And the God who answers by fire, he's God. And all the people answered, it's well spoken. Then Elijah said to the prophets of Baal, choose for yourselves one bowl, prepare it for us. You are many, call upon the name of your god, but put no fire to it. So he says, you're a lot of people, maybe your prayer will be heard because there's a lot of you. So this is one of the things that people will wonder about prayer. Is my prayer gonna be heard by God if I've got more people praying for me? The amount of people, four hundred and fifty? It didn't matter because they were praying to the wrong person. Elijah's just one. His prayers can be heard, not because of how many people there are that day at Mount Carmel that are calling upon God. Four hundred and fifty calling to Baal, one calling to the Lord. The number of people is not what matters, whose God matters. Verse twenty-six, they took the bowl that was given them, and they prepared it and called upon the name of Baal from morning until noon, saying, oh Baal, answer us. There was no voice, no one answered. They limped around the altar that they had made. So they're, they're walking around the altar, they think maybe motion is gonna make a difference. At noon Elijah mocked them, saying, cry aloud, for he is a God, either he's musing, or he's relieving himself, or he's on a journey, or perhaps he's asleep, and must be awakened. So Elijah's mocking the prophets of Baal, saying, maybe your God's busy, maybe your God is going to the bathroom, maybe he's on vacation, or maybe he's asleep. They cry, so they're, they're calling with loud voices, and then it says, they cut themselves after the custom of swords and lances until the blood gushed out upon them. So, there is this custom, it appears, that they think that if their God sees what willing sacrifices that they are able to make, that they're gonna cut themselves, that their God will be inspired to act by seeing the genuineness of their faith. And as midday passed, they raved on until the time of the offering of the oblation, but there was no voice, no one answered, no one paid attention. So what did the prophets of Baal think was needed for their prayers to be acceptable? We got a lot of them, they circle, they cry, they cut themselves. None of those things help. How does Elijah approach God in prayer? How did he show his faith in God? Then Elijah said to all the people, come near to me. And all the people came near to him, he repaired the altar of the Lord that had been thrown down. Elijah took twelve stones according to the number of the tribes of the sons of Jacob, to whom the word of the Lord came, saying, Israel shall be your name, and with the stones he built an altar in the name of the Lord, made a trench about the altar as great as he could to contain two sias of seed. As he put the wood in order and cut the bull in pieces and lay down the wood, he said, fill four jars with water, pour it on the burnt offering and on the wood. He said, do it a second time, and they did a second time, and he said, do it a third time, they did a third time. The water ran around the altar, filled the trench and also with water. Remember, the task is to have a fire come upon the wood and consume the bowl of the sacrifice. He has now soaked it with water. And he has, let's go back though, what does Elijah do in approach to God? He builds an altar of twelve stones. He is remembering that God he is praying to is the same God that's been acting for the people from the very beginning. He's the God that had brought the twelve tribes of Israel into the promised land. So one of the things that Elijah does in his prayer is he remembers the actions of God in the past. He's not starting with a blank slate, an unknown God. He's starting with the God that's made himself known through the tribes of Israel. And he shows his faith in God by knowing that God is the one who can make the impossible happen. He soaks the wood, the name of the offering of oblation. Elijah the prophet came near and said, oh Lord, God of Abraham, Isaac, and Israel. Again, history, the God that has been in action for the people in the past is the God that he is talking to, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Israel. Let it be known this day that you are a God in Israel. I am your servant, and I've done all these things at your word. So, how did he show his faith in God? He calls upon God by remembering God's action in the past and saying, I believe in you, God. When you doubt, when you lack faith, return to the scriptures. God speaks in these words of scripture. Let the words of scripture that you hear become the words that you are then equipped to speak. When you wonder, how does someone pray in a way that makes sense? Remember, they know the scriptures, they're speaking the very words of God back to them. Let's look to Psalm nineteen to see a pattern of prayer there. So Psalm nineteen, that's where I'm turning my Bible to. Psalm nineteen, verse fourteen. Let the words of my mouth, the meditation of my heart be acceptable in your sight, oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer. So, the words of my mouth, the meditations of my heart, where do they come from? How can this verse become a good place for you to begin your own prayer? By knowing that the words of our mouths and the meditations of our heart are not the starting point of our prayer. That's the fruit of having heard the word of God. Meditate on God's word. Bring it into the tension of your life, and then pray. Last week we spoke about this, the meditatio, tentatio, oratio. Pray with the meditation of God's word into the tension of what you need, what, what is going on in your life. And then speak with prayer, oratio. Oratio is a Latin phrase that means prayer. So meditatio, meditation, tentatio, tension, and then oratio, prayer. Alright, looking on the study sheet now, we're gonna look at Hebrews, chapter ten. And we're going to see what in Hebrews we find out about prayer. So Hebrews, chapter ten, verses nineteen and twenty-three. Therefore brothers, we have confidence to enter the holy places by the blood of Jesus, by the new and living way that he opened for us through the curtain, that is through his flesh. We have a great priest over the house of God. Let us draw near with a true heart and full assurance of faith, with a heart sprinkled clean from an evil conscience, and our bodies washed with pure water. Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering, for he who has promised is faithful. So how does this passage describe prayer? It's entering the holy places of God through the blood of Jesus Christ, knowing that we've been sprinkled clean and washed clean by the blood of the Lamb. This passage is describing prayer as entering into the presence of God and knowing that he is gonna hear you, because you have a great high priest in Jesus Christ who is making intercession for you. What has Christ done? What has Jesus done for you that gives us confidence that we might draw nearer to God? Nearer my God, to thee I come, through Jesus Christ, my Lord and my Savior. Hold fast this confession of faith, that he is the Lord and the Savior of all, and that he is the one by whom you make access to the Father. The arrogance of Christians in prayer is not found in how perfect we are, or how much better than other people we are. The confidence of Christians in prayer is found in Jesus Christ. Jesus is the Lord and Savior who invites us to be in conversation. So, I speak with humbleness, that I do not on my own deserve to speak to God. But I also speak with confidence, that I am gonna talk to God in prayer, because Jesus, my Lord, my Savior, the God who has rescued me from sin, from death and the devil, invites me to be with God. So, when we describe prayer to other people, when I say, I'm gonna pray for you, I am bringing your requests to the very presence of God, into the holiness of God. They're not just words that are spoken into the everydayness and commonness of the day. They are words spoken, so they are words spoken into the holiness of God. Alright, now let's look at another spot of prayer, and we're looking at attitude. We're looking at, do we have to be worried about how much we pray? So Genesis eighteen is where we're looking now, and this is gonna be Abraham talking to God, and the Lord is gonna bring destruction to Sodom and Gomorrah, and this is, this is hard for Abraham, because he's looking down upon a land of people, and he wants to know, God, are you gonna bring destruction into that land? So let's, Genesis, chapter eighteen, verses twenty to thirty-three, and our main question here is, God's will versus our own will, can we ask God to do his will? Yeah, the Lord said, because the outcry against Sodom and Gomorrah is great, and their sin is very grave, I will go down to see where they have done altogether. I'm gonna see the outcry that has come up to me, and if not, I'll know what's going on. So the men turned from there and went towards Sodom, but Abraham stood, he stood, still stood before the Lord. Abraham drew near and said, will you indeed sweep away the righteous with the wicked? Suppose there are fifty righteous within the city, will you then sweep away that place and not spare it from the fifty righteous who are in it? Far be it from me to do such a thing, to put the righteous to death with wicked, so that the righteous fares wicked. Far be it from you, so not the judge of all the earth do what is just. And the Lord said, if I find at Sodom fifty righteous in the city, I will spare the whole place for their sake. And the prayer continues, and you're gonna find that Abraham is incredibly persistent. But I want you to think about now, your own persistence in prayer and Abraham's persistence. Abraham is persistent in prayer because he's calling upon God to be righteous, to do the will of God that has been revealed in the past, to preserve and protect the righteous. Did God become angry with Abraham's persistence? No, because Abraham's persistence was based in the truth of God's mercy. If I am persistent in asking God to give me a red Corvette, that's entirely different. Persistence in prayer is good when it is drawing on the will of God to be revealed. If it's persistent for your own deeds, then it's not that good. Alright, we got another passage to look at, but I'm, I'm looking at time, and I realize we're getting close to the end of time. We just got about a minute left, and I, I want to think about what happens to Sodom and Gomorrah. The two angels came to Sodom in the evening, and Lot was sitting in the gate of Sodom. And Lot saw them, he rose to meet them and bowed himself with his face to the earth and said. And, and so Lot invites these two angels to stay with them. So Lot is gonna be welcoming with his hospitality, and the angels are gonna usher Lot and his family out of the city, and then bring the destruction. The question is, when we look around in us, in our own world, does God bring destruction and bring suffering to the righteous? Or are we rescued like, like Lot and his family? It's kind of both and. We are rescued, the Lord Jesus Christ has given us the assurance and confidence that we are saved for eternal life, and yet we are still experiencing suffering in this age. And yet we are still experiencing suffering in this age. It's a thin of faith. That's what I'm asking you to have when you look at the suffering in this world. Have faith that there's more that God has planned. And on the day of the Lord, when the trumpet blasts, the righteous will be rescued. Alright, that concludes our Bible study today. We're gonna continue to look at prayer next week. Next week, June sixth, important announcement. We are going to be in person for prayer, Bible study. We'll still be recording the Bible study. Um, I'm not sure if it's gonna be live and live streamed, or if it will be recorded on video and then uploaded later. But um, my encouragement is you come, come to worship. Be with your brothers and sisters in Christ. Do not neglect to meet together. Be in worship. It's time. June sixth, Bible study, uh, hour nine forty-five to ten forty-five. Uh, it's now time to be in worship and be in Bible study. If you still need to stay at home, I know that individually there are unique circumstances that are going on. We will continue to be live streaming our worship service on Saturday night at six P M. We'll continue to live stream our eight thirty service on Sunday mornings. And we'll find ways to record up the Bible study or live stream it. I know that there are unique circumstances in some homes, but if you're able to be in Bible study, if you're able to be in worship, be there. Be present. Let your brothers and sisters in Christ see the testimony of your faith and trust in God and hear the word alongside of them. Alright, let's close with a prayer. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for your grace and mercy which are new each day. Continue to send your Holy Spirit to lead us in the study of prayer. So that we may find in the meditation of your word and the tension of our own lives, the wisdom to bring it in prayer to you. Amen. Have a great blessed day. I'm glad you've joined us in Bible study today.